I would like to call and order the special meeting of the Averlon City Council for Thursday, March 19th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Gabby Wade, we please have the roll call.
Councilmember Haves.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall. Here.
Mayor, can I just make a couple announcements quickly?
Please.
This is our first general meeting where the public cannot attend in the council chambers due to the social distancing, but we are, have three ways for people to watch the meeting, and that is with Channel 3 streaming on our cityofavalon.com/meetings. And we just started a new Facebook Live, so it's facebook.com/cityofavalonofficial. And you have a few ways to ask questions or to say something during the oral communication time of the meeting, which is our next thing, and that's by going to ask@cityofavalon.com. And that's A-S-K, cityofavalon.com, or to call City Hall, which is 310-510-0220, and the extension is 100. We have somebody answering that, and you just tell them what your question is. It's 300 words or less. So during oral communication is the time that the public can make a statement. And then during our agenda item this evening is strictly just a financial update to the City Council. And if there are questions related to the finances of the city, that is the time when the mayor asks for that.
Great. Do we, before we get started on general business, I don't know if some of us have just some kind of questions or whatever, since we're not going to be seeing each other maybe for a couple of other weeks. I know we're all getting all kinds of information from Supervisor Hahn and the Assessors Office and whatever. Are we getting that because they talk about all these other kinds of assistance programs?
Thank you.
Okay.
So our City of Avalon website has been redone by two staff members. As soon as you go to the City of Avalon website, at the very top, there's a bright red strip at the top. You click on that, and it takes you to a link about all the coronavirus, COVID-19. And on that, it goes to the LA County's confirmed cases in LA County, and it outlines every city and the numbers. There's a link to the live virtual briefing for LA County Department of Public Health, and that's at 12:30, Monday through Friday. And also, there is a link for the Catalina Island Medical Center. There are video of the doctor that presented on Tuesday evening. There's all kinds of informational links and resources for residents and businesses.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Oh, and I don't know if the public knows this, but the Catalina Express is reducing their passage to the island due to the decreased number. It's pretty much residents coming back and forth, and they want to make sure that they keep that open, starting on Monday. So they're doing a two-stepped phase-out, and starting Monday, it's only from Long Beach Port. Dana Point will no longer run, as well as San Pedro. They'll be leaving Long Beach at 7:15 a.m. and departing Avalon at 9:00 a.m., and then returning at 4:30 p.m. from Long Beach and leaving Avalon at 6:15 p.m. We've been in contact. The Island Company has pretty much shut down all their operations, the hotels, the Hotel Atwater, I believe their last night is Sunday night. All their sea and land casino tours, everything is shutting down, as well as their rest, the last restaurant was the Avalon Grill, and that won't even be doing takeout after Sunday. The freight lines will continue to deliver as they have been. That's not decreasing. That is not decreasing at all. And at the next council meeting, we will be having the item of discussion that you requested on the temporary moratorium of rent evictions on commercial and residential properties. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. And when we get the update today, is there, have we made decisions about park closures and public restroom hours or anything like that?
Well, we did close down Joe Machado Field as of today, Dan, and our little parks are still open, Mayor, at this time. I had a discussion today during the Chamber Board meeting. It was mentioned, maybe the basketball court and the volleyball court, the kids are over there, their perspiring bodies are touching one another. So I think that we want to give it a couple days to monitor that, to see if it's something we need to cancel too. You know, you do want people to get out and get fresh air, but they are supposed to be staying more at home instead of being out. But we don't discourage people getting exercise, that's for sure.
Right, okay. And just do the social distancing, and we should be good? Okay.
Can I ask Denise a couple questions? If I heard you correctly, you said that on the next agenda, we would have the discussion regarding an emergency ordinance for landlords and...
To talk about a moratorium of rent eviction, not allowing the owners to evict people because they can't pay their rent.
Okay. And then can we, if the council is interested, could we do an emergency ordinance requiring landlords and mortgage holders to allow up to 24 months to fulfill payment obligations for rents?
That information that we got, whoever sent that to us, was a really good guideline, I thought.
This is the LA, the city of LA's.
Wasn't that through November, though? Councilmember Cassidy, if you'd give me what you're looking at?
Absolutely.
And we'll do whatever we can legally.
Yeah, this, I would like to do something. Part of the reason that I'm now even more concerned than I was before I got here was trying to keep up with emails. There was an email sent out by the Chamber last night that is asking for voluntary closures of businesses through April 30th. So now we're looking at more months. I mean, and I understand that and all, but it's not the original two weeks that we were thinking, hey, let's quarantine for two weeks. We're now economically going to be hit a heck of a lot harder.
I think that was, it was through April, like we were asking of the cruise lines not to come in, so I think that's where that came from, and...
Yeah. So I don't know if, and I do know there are some landlords who are of the thought process that they need their tenants to pay rent in order to make their mortgage payments. So I just, you know, we can't have people, obviously can't have people getting evicted, but we also, I mean, where do you have the money if you have no money coming in? I just, I don't know. I just want to help. So I don't know, is it fair to wait three weeks before we do that, or is that something?
We could have a special meeting, Councilmember.
I agree.
I mean, can we, would you guys be, I mean, and now we're supposed to be changing seats in three weeks, too? I mean, can we do some of this stuff together before? Sure. Please, and I know it's a lot of extra resources.
Look for dates for next week.
Yeah, there's good examples of just what Cindy is saying, and so, and we seem to be following a lot of what LA City is doing and LA County is doing. So in the discussion on one of the teleconferences yesterday, it's if we all work in unison and are saying the same thing, it makes it much easier for all the counties, you know, to...
And the original eviction thing came down from the governor, so...
Right, right.
And then, I'm sorry, the other one was, there was a rumor that I know Dan could dispel for us, but there was a rumor that the food pantry at the community church was not allowed to accept donations, food donations, and/or participants to help out. And then I saw a post a couple hours ago that the food pantry would be open a few hours here or there.
So, thank you. As we're talking a lot about closures and things that we're not doing anymore, one of the things I think we're going to start to see is the opportunity for the food pantry and those that have a heart for that to expand those services. So I think what you're referring to is on Wednesday, yesterday, or today's Wednesday? Yesterday, yesterday, the medical center reached out to the food pantry and said, "We advise that you don't open up for today for the regular services." The thought was, they wanted to see some training go through, just some food handling training on the food. So we have geared up, and we are going to meet those recommendations that they've got. There will be a full wipe-down of the whole pantry before it opens tomorrow for a special 12 to 2. And on top of that, we've had some nice donations with some of the things that are happening. Restaurants closing, we've got a nice donation for some fresh vegetables from the Island Company. They said, in essence, about $3,000 worth of food. There was a group that we picked up some food from, from Campus by the Sea, 15 boxes of lettuce and tomatoes and cantaloupes, and they had 280 people, supposed to be at camp next week, and with that being closed, so they had some food. So food pantry will be open tomorrow from 12 to 2. A lot of fresh vegetables and fruits, along with the canned goods. Everything will be wiped down really thoroughly. The process is basically going to be gloves by those that are handing out the food. We're not having participants come into the pantry. It'll be just curbside. Social distancing standards will be set for that. And then it'll continue regularly on Wednesdays from 12 to 2 from here on out.
Great, thank you. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the community to address the City Council. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers would be limited to three minutes.
So 300 words if you're sending a message in.
Yeah.
Do you have anything, Gabby?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, general business, financial update.
Evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. So the goal of this update is to provide counsel with an update regarding the city's current financial situation. What I'm also going to be providing is a forecast of visitor-driven revenues and cash flows over the next three months due to business and tax interruptions from COVID-19. And we're also going to end the presentation discussing the short-term strategies of the city to ensure the continued servicing of essential city services, including public safety. Please keep in mind, as I was coming up with these forecasts, I'm getting news updates, you know, by the hour, and, you know, some assumptions that we make have to be changed on the fly. And so we're trying to keep our forecasts up to date with as the times change. My plan is to provide these updates more regularly throughout the situation until revenues and business normalizes in the town. So the next slide is a picture of where the city stands from a cash perspective as of February 29th, 2020. The slide to the left is a breakdown of the city's funds. Again, when we're looking at city finances, we have to look at each fund as its own separate business. The two largest funds the city has is the General Fund. The General Fund is what pays for basic essential city services, things like recreation, planning, fire department, the sheriff's contract, et cetera. The second largest fund being the Harbor Fund, which pays for the Harbor Patrol, a lot of the maintenance and public works that goes along Front Street and in the harbor, as well as the lifeguard and paramedic services. The chart to the right is a breakdown of where the cash currently is sitting. Again, as we're getting into this situation, liquidity is important. The bottom is the cash as of February 29th in US Bank. The middle section is what we have in LAHEF, and so those funds are available to us overnight. And then on the top are funds currently invested in CDs.
And, I'm sorry, LAHEF?
LAHEF is a local area investment fund. It's a pooled savings account, if you will, but it traditionally gets a higher rate than what a normal savings account at a bank would have. So again, I just want to kind of highlight some of the things I was thinking about when I was developing this forecast. Some of the things that we would be considering was whether a revenue was visitor-driven or resident-driven, and the significance behind that, obviously, is with the business interruptions that we're currently experiencing. Visitor-driven revenues are the ones that are going to be impacted first, not that there won't be an impact on resident-driven revenues, as many of the businesses in town rely on visitors, just like the city does. But that's one of the things we looked at, at least from a short-term basis, whether the revenue's coming from visitors or residents on the island. Another thing that we would consider would be the timing of tax revenues. So for example, TOT from the month of February would be due by the end of March, whereas sales tax, the sales tax we anticipate receiving in March reflects sales activity that happened in January. So from a cash flow standpoint, what the tax revenue relates to will impact how much we anticipate to receive in the coming months. Another thing I did consider is the collectibility of tax revenues owed to the city. So again, in February, we had more or less normal operations as far as visitorship, but those tax revenues and rents aren't necessarily due to the city until the end of March. We're very much reliant on those tax revenues to fund our operations, and so one of the things we had to consider is the collectibility of those revenues that are owed to the city. Another thing we had to consider is how long do we anticipate this interruption to continue? As I mentioned, the news regarding COVID-19 and the anticipated impacts it will have on travel and tourism is changing by the day. So we did our best to try to come up with what we felt is a reasonable assumption as far as how long this will last. Again, this is a moving target. As we get more information, we will continue to revise our projections. And then lastly, we also looked at what our current non-grant-funded capital outlays are anticipated in the next quarter, as well as what restrictions or what requirements are associated with grant-funded capital outlays. So we have certain obligations with grant-funded projects, where if we weren't to meet certain deadlines or timelines, we would need, we'd need to work with those granting agencies to make sure that we're in compliance with those agreements. And again, we, like most businesses in this town, are reliant on our visitor-driven revenues to fund our operations. A complete disruption not only prevents challenges to the long term for the city, but also to short-term cash flows as well, which I will elaborate on more. The next slide is a breakdown of our General Fund revenues. The pie chart to the left is one that I have used in multiple presentations. It is a breakdown of General Fund revenues by category. As you can see, the largest revenues relate to our TOT revenues. That's our transient occupancy tax on both hotels and short-term rentals. You can see with the chart on the right, the TOT and ad tax are considered visitor-driven in my analysis because they are 100% paid for by visitors coming to the island. The second category is what I consider semi visitor-driven. An example of that would be sales tax. While the residents in this town do pay sales tax, visitors also pay sales tax on purchases of meals, beverages, et cetera. And so while we anticipate some sales tax revenue to continue throughout this interruption, there will be an impact on sales tax revenues as some of them are paid by our visitor population. And then the third category is what I consider to be resident-driven, but keep in mind, even resident-driven revenues are somewhat dependent on visitorship, as many of the jobs in this town from residents come from visitors. This chart is a breakdown of what the impact on visitor, on the city's budget would be based on anticipated revenues. So what I did in the top half of this chart is I looked at our major revenue sources, looking at how much we collected from a cash basis in April through June of last year. So as you can see, April through June last year, the city collected almost 1.1 million in TOT. We collected almost 200,000 in sales tax, 585,000 in property tax, and then other revenues, almost 400,000. The asterisk by the property tax is last year in the fourth quarter, we received a true-up payment of about 250,000 that I don't anticipate receiving this year, but for the purpose of the chart, I have treated it like the other revenue sources. So as you can see, going down the first column, the expenditures, I've broken down between salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, contract services, and internal services and transfers. Capital outlays in the General Fund, I have not included in this analysis. I'm showing from an operation standpoint what the impact of revenues have on our operations. As you can see, assuming 100% of revenues, we would be basically spending everything we bring in. While the city does have a savings, if you will, in that we do have a fund balance, we are, in a sense, living paycheck to paycheck, or at least that is how we have been living. So even with 100% of revenues, we aren't increasing our savings or increasing our fund balance. As you move from left to right, you can see what the impact would have if revenues dropped from 100% to 75%. That would be a decrease on fund balance of over 500,000. Moving all the way down to zero revenues for the quarter would be a 2 million-plus draw on existing funds, and that would be to operate basically as we have been currently. So that's what, no changes to current operations.
Mayor, we've been contacted a couple times that we're having a hard time with the streaming on our website, so I just want to remind the public, but I guess if they're not listening, they wouldn't know, but I think, Cindy, can you put it out there to go to our Facebook?
Yeah.
They're working on the technical difficulty.
So it's facebook.com/cityofavalonofficial, I believe is the link for it.
And it's on Channel 3.
And it's on Channel 3 as well.
Thank you, Alex.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I understand the reduction in some of these revenue streams. I'm not sure I understand the reduction in the property tax.
I agree. This is just more for illustrative purposes. What the next slides are going to do, it's going to break down of what my assumptions and estimates are, and then we'll see where it lands. This was really just to illustrate that if things operated at 100% of normal, we would basically be living off of what we're bringing in. And so you can see, as those revenues decrease, the increase in the drawn on funds.
But if they allow them to be late on their property tax, we wouldn't see that money for later, right? Because they're even thinking about doing something with property tax? Some kind of a...
We're not paying property tax.
What's that?
We pay the property tax this year.
Well, I owe them money in April.
The county did said something out saying that they were extending that for the people that couldn't make their last payment.
So then we might not get that much. Okay.
So then what I have in the next two slides are going to be what my assumptions are as far as revenue collections over the next four months. A lot of the charts I'm showing is for the fourth quarter, but I have included March in here as well, as we were in the middle of the month as I was putting together this forecast. My estimate, I estimate that General Fund revenues will decrease by 115,000. My assumptions are that visitor-driven revenues will be minimally impacted during the month of February, so I'm estimating that any visitor-driven revenue, so TOT or ad tax, will be 75% of what they were last year. Again, last year, we did have a below-average February, largely due to a number of rain events during that month. But the reason why I do not have it at 100% is as TOT and ad tax isn't due till the end of the month, I am anticipating some late payments and some potential issues with collectibility due to the business interruption. Again, my, I estimated that licenses, permits will be greater impacted in the month of March than visitor-driven revenues, as the nature of operations at City Hall have changed regarding the extension of the vehicle permits, as well as the cancellation of recreation programs, and the reduction in construction-type activities or building permit-type activities going on in town. So my assumption was for March that those revenues would be half of what they were last year. And then in the short term, I don't anticipate any impacts on sales tax, property tax, or ambulance fees, as there is a several-month lag from when those revenues are earned versus when we see them on a cash basis. So again, our sales tax that we anticipate receiving in March is reflective of sales activity in the month of January. For April, you'll start to see an increase in the decrease in revenue. I anticipate almost 300,000 in lost revenue during the month of April. Again, I'm looking at visitor-driven revenues at 25% of prior years. We did have a couple of weeks of somewhat normal activity in the town, so my assumption is that we will receive some visitor-driven revenues, but there likely will be some late payments in there as well, at least my estimates. Licenses, permits, I have assumed for the month of April to be at zero. Again, one of my overriding assumptions was that April would be a near shutdown or lockdown of typical business activity with very minimal traffic at City Hall with regards to paying of permits or building permits, vehicle permits, things of that nature. And then again, sales tax and property tax and ambulance fees not necessarily impacted in our April revenue collections, as there's the lag that I previously discussed. Moving then on to May, we see a decrease in revenues estimated at 425,000. Again, if there is a complete shutdown of visitor activities and that hotels and admissions aren't going on in the month of April, that's when we would see it, would be in May, when those revenues become due. So in my estimates, we have none of those types of revenues being collected. I do have licenses, permits, fees, and those types of revenues at 25% of prior year. That's assuming in May, we start to see some shift towards normalcy, some activity going on within City Hall as far as paying for licenses and permits and that nature. Again, in May is when I expect to see some impact on ambulance fees and sales tax, as that's reflective of activity in March. While there would be some decrease, there are still some transactions going on in town, whether it's online purchases where we receive a portion of the county pool, or purchases in town that are subject to sales tax. So I don't anticipate sales tax completely going away, but there will be an impact we would see in our May payment, I would estimate. And then in June, again, decrease in revenues of 460,000. This is assuming visitor-driven revenues are at 25% of normal. Again, with my assumption that activity begins to resume in May, I don't anticipate activity in May to be at the same level it was May of last year. Again, even as hotels open up, decreases in room rates will have a effect on the city's revenues as well, considering TOT revenues are based on a percentage of the room rate. So if hotels are even open and selling the same number of rooms, but at a discounted rate, the city would see that discount and a decreased revenue for a TOT tax. Again, licenses and permits, I would assume, assuming there will be an increase in that, but it won't be at the level of normal, as our residents likely will have been interrupted and affected by the COVID-19 situation. And again, April, or in June is when I expect to see most of April's impact on sales tax reflected in our June collection of sales tax, so I have that at 25% of historically what we've collected in the month of June. So if you add all those together, it's approximately 1.3 million in lost revenues over the next three and a half months as a result of the business interruption and tax interruption from COVID-19 to the General Fund.
I have a question. Is the, is the May versus the June, which you're saying we'll lose more money in June than we did in May, is that because, is that based on typically what that month's expenses are because we gear up with staff?
This is really just looking at revenues, but because we typically would see increased TOT in June compared to the month of May, if June TOT is 25% of normal and May TOT is 25% of normal, the June impact from a dollar standpoint would be greater.
It's probably even greater.
We are no different than any business in town. You know, we also make our money during the summer months as a city with wharfage, cruise ship wharfage, TOT. And generally, if you look at our cash flows as a city, we make our money in the summer months, and then we ride off those monies through the fall and winter and spring. We are, we are no different than most businesses in town with regards to that. So right now, my focus was on the next quarter. The challenge with forecasting in this environment is I really don't know when to expect normalcy to return. So the further out we project, the more conjecture it really is. But my plan is to, as we progress, to continue to forecast... it really is. But my plan is to, as we progress, to continue to forecast outward from here. But if activity does not resume closer to our historical numbers, there will be a greater impact July and August as well. So again, I just want to now highlight what we spend our money on in the general fund. And I don't mean to call out fire department here, but I just want to emphasize that a lot of the expenditures in the general fund do relate to public safety. And in this environment, you know, it's of the utmost importance that we keep our residents and visitors safe. But I am calling that out to show just the impact public safety does have on our general fund's operating expenditures. So in any particular pay period, we have salaries and benefits in the general fund of approximately 155,000 per pay period. Fire department wages account for about $50,000. Retirement, another 10. Medical insurance, another 16. And what I don't have included there is our unfunded...